Good evening. I'm going to call the Planning Commission regular meeting to order. Hang on one second. It is 6:47-ish, and today is February 1st, 2018. We're located at City Hall in the city of Sumamish in the council chambers. So I -- once I actually get my agenda together. Okay, so the next item of business is roll call. I will start on my right this evening.
Mark Baughman present.
Jane Garrison.
Rituja Indapure.
Shanna Collins.
Eric Brooks.
Rituja Indapure.
Okay, so we have six commissioners present this evening, which constitutes a quorum. Who -- oh, and we're missing Mr. Crandall. He is actually in Mexico, lucky guy. He's on vacation. So we are missing Mr. Crandall, and I wanted to make a note while we're talking about roll call that I will be absent for the March 1st meeting. I'll be out of town. And it is helpful if we talk about when we'll be absent just to make sure that we can keep tabs on having a quorum.
Will Larry be back?
Yes.
Okay.
He should be back soon. Yeah. Okay, so the next item of business is the approval of the agenda. So is there any objection to approving the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay, seeing none, the agenda is approved. The next item of business is the approval of the minutes. Is there any objection to approving the minutes from January 18th, 2018? Seeing none, the minutes for January 18th, 2018 are approved. And the next item of business will be public comment. Is there anyone who wants to speak on a non-agenda item at this point? Yeah.
So I'm Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sumamish. I wanted to talk a little bit. You guys had looked at the stormwater codes moving to City Council, and you guys had made some comments like, why is there zero square feet or 500 square feet or 1,000 square feet? Shouldn't it really be a percentage of the size? Like if you have a really large lot, you can have more impervious surface, and if you have a really small lot, you're pretty limited because you just don't have the room to do the thing. So when it came to City Council, there's a number of houses that are older that have added gravel or increased their driveways or added driveways or increased things. And it just seems to me that -- and I think even Tom Odell spoke to that. He lives in Heritage Hills. He's a previous city -- one of the people, the city council members who left. And he said, you know, I see my house and the sport court, and people add stuff. You can't just let people build whatever they want. Like your house can't be a skyscraper because there's a 34-foot height limit, and you can't have a zero setback lot line because you can't even stand and paint your house or do the siding unless you're on somebody else's property. So you need to have setbacks. And Eric Brooks has talked about that before, too. When you have a driveway, I believe there's a radius and a turning thing, 20 feet or whatever, to get in. So there are limits on what you can do. So I -- it really bothered me about the impervious surface because if you're an existing house and you never had a drainage review and you want to add more, you shouldn't get 500 square feet for free. So there's -- NPDES requires new, replaced, or new plus replaced if it's 2,000 square feet or more, that that's a drainage threshold. And then due to the problems, the city dropped that to 500 for like Inglewood and Tamarack areas. So I wanted to look up existing. So I went into King County Code, the old code and the new code, and I just searched for existing impervious. And one of the things it says in there over and over and over is that a lot is considered to be substantially developed when it is 35% impervious. And I had also suggested 35% because last year at the Planning Commission level and the City Code level, procedural code came through, and I didn't know what that was, but I listened. And procedural code was like development standards. Like Evan Maximu, who was the planner, said, you know, in Bellevue, they just decided that you have to have a yard. So they kind of did that. So there is like a lawn area or a yard area for ours. And they were trying to get rid of bulk enassing with really big houses by doing other things. And they were trying to use impervious surface for it. So they decided that that wasn't the right tool, but they actually took that out of our code. And our code did use to say that 35% impervious was kind of a key threshold. So I think it's important to look at that. I've also seen it in City Code for Isiqua, for Mercer Island, and for Bellevue. And I just think that's something that's worthy of adding back in. I believe there is some development code changes that will be coming back through Planning Commission and/or City Council this year. I forget where it is on the thing, but I just wanted to let you know that some of the most recent research I did, it's related to stormwater code, but it's existing impervious surface and how big a house can you be. Because if you go over the size of that detention pond, the city will have to have bigger detention ponds, so you can't just keep making your houses bigger and bigger.
Thank you for the comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, I will close public comment for this section. And the next item of business is new business. And tonight, under new business, we have the administration reorganization, election of chair and vice chair. So but first, I want to start by welcoming our new commissioners, Rituja Indapure and Mark Baughman. So welcome. And actually, if it's okay with you guys, we could do just a little short introduction. Tell us anything you want to tell us about your family, how long you've lived here, what do you want to do on the Planning Commission. It doesn't have to be long.
I'll start. My name is Rituja Indapure, and I've lived in Klahani for the past 15 years. I have two kids aged 18 and 14. I have a daughter who's off to University of Oregon, and my son is a freshman at Skyline. I'm really excited to be on the Planning Commission, and especially since we're starting with the urban forest plan. Because last year, when I was canvassing and talking to people, many of them told me that, you know, they're really concerned about the trees that we're losing. And I think this urban forest plan is going to give them a vision on how Sumamish can still look green and vibrant, you know, 10, 15 years down the line. And research has shown that, you know, where trees are healthy in communities that have lots of trees are more resilient communities. So I'm really looking forward to that and also to the housing strategy update.
Excellent. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Mark?
And I'm Mark Baughman. My wife and I moved here in 1997, so I've lived here a long time and seen a lot of the changes. I have a daughter who's a senior picking out of college and a son who's a freshman both at Eastlake, and my wife's a teacher in the community. Rituja and I both ran for City Council. We're unsuccessful. So one of the things I'm interested in the Planning Commission is to take some of that experience and some of the things that I heard from the community during campaigning, and then fold that in with my experience in the commercial construction industry and try to help the city through the Planning Commission to do a better job or at least continue to do a good job in the development that happens. Because there's a tremendous amount of pressure, as we all know, out there for developing. And so part of this commission's responsibility and the City Council's responsibility is to try to guide that in the right direction for the benefit of our community. So that's why I'm here.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome. Okay, so the next part of the night is to elect the chair and vice chair. So as a commission, we decide who the leadership will be. So I will just ask for some nominations. I know Larry Crandall submitted a nomination by email, but I will first take nominations for -- actually, I'll go with vice chair first. So are there any nominations for vice chair?
And it has to be different people than are currently in those positions?
No, no, it can be current.
Well, I think Larry's doing a magnificent job. I'd like to recommend Larry to stay in his position.
I'll second that. Sorry, Eric. We have a motion and a second to elect Larry Crandall as the vice chair for 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so that passes unanimously.
Great. And Chair Collins, I do have an acceptance of that nomination.
Oh, that's right.
Via email from Larry because he's always prepared.
He's so prepared.
He did send me that, an acceptance that he would love to be vice chair for 2018. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, so the next one we will do is chair, and are there any nominations for chair?
I'd like to nominate Shanna Collins.
A motion and a second to nominate Shanna Collins as the chair. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. And that passes unanimously. So great. Good. This should be fun. We have a good year ahead of us. All right, I guess, well, Larry accepted by email. I accept in person. So here we are. The next item of business tonight will be old business. And old business is the housing strategy update. And we will have a work session on that this evening. The bulk of tonight is going to be Mr. Sullivan giving us a presentation on the data that we received in the packet. So this should be a pretty intensive discussion about the data, what the data says. Feel free to ask questions. Let's try to keep this informal. We can stop him. We can talk amongst ourselves. We can debate, whatever we want to do. We'll just make this a really working session so that we can get through all the data and get all of our questions answered. And I think the packet has all the data. Were we going to do something with all the slides?
Yes, you should have in front of you the slide deck. Is this not on? Oh, I have them. I already passed them out. Those are extras. So you should have this slide deck. It looks like this in front of you. Does everyone have that? Okay, fantastic. And then, yes, in your packet material is the actual raw data, so.
Okay, so we have the slides, and I will now turn it over to staff.
Okay, well, thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission and Madam Chair Collins. I would also like to add, this is, again, a very data-heavy presentation. I'd like to remind the commission, we do have some coffee and sugar if you need to power up and get us through this next hour and a half. So with that said, Kelly Hildy, Planning Manager. I am filling in for Mr. McIntyre, who is away from the office. And joining me tonight is Mike Stanger and Arthur Sullivan from Arch. And like I mentioned before, we will be talking -- this is our work session three. We'll be talking about -- oh, actually, let's get this presentation up on the screen. How about that? Tonight, we'll be reviewing a project recap, where we've been and where we're going. We'll be reviewing the demographic and housing data, and we'll be talking about next steps. We do have a break with our commission meetings. We do not have a meeting on the 15th. We'll be back on March 1st. So the purpose of tonight's meeting, again, is to review the data points provided by staff. This is going to help us understand the makeup of our community, how that influences housing, and how that actually is going to influence the draft strategies that the Planning Commission, along with community input, will provide City Council for review. We started this journey back in September of 2017 with an overview of the housing element and the comprehensive plan, and then how the housing policies work with that document. We also reviewed the housing strategy plan itself and what it is and what it's not, the city's role in housing, and the partners that help -- who play a part in, again, coming up with our strategies, and the type of strategies that can be used in a housing strategy plan. Also, this last meeting that we had, we really talked about public outreach and communication efforts. Just as I mentioned with the UFMP plan, we really do want to engage the community with this planning effort. Being able to reach a diversity of folks in the city, folks who tend to not come to our meetings or be as involved is very important. It takes the village to do this planning work. And so, as again, as I mentioned with the UFMP, we ask that the Planning Commission, the ambassadors, to spread the word of what we're doing and why it's really important for people in the community to get involved and to provide their opinions and thoughts. And with that introduction, I'm actually going to pass it off to our experts, and they are going to review the data with you and answer any questions that you may have. So thank you.
Good evening. And as the chair said, this is meant to be informal. This is your chance to react, ask questions, and things along those lines. Before, I can actually turn it over to Mike to do sort of the data portion of the presentation, of the specific data. But again, just a little refresher and reminder that as we're doing our work at the last meeting, we talked with you about sort of the general theme areas. And we're not -- and so I just wanted to remind you of those so that as you're thinking about data, that will be helpful. And if we're talking about, is there any other data or things along those lines? And the questions I gave you to think about in the data portion, keep in mind these sections. So the first is, one is around neighborhood character, which is really more about sense of community and neighborhood and character of the neighborhood and transitioning areas. How do you make -- what is that? What is character and how you're trying to maintain that as you move forward? Second theme is overall supply of housing and variety of housing. So that's where you're looking at your overall growth and the variety of housing that you have within your growth to address needs, the different needs in the community. Third primary area is housing affordability. So that's pretty straightforward, I think, in terms of what income levels, different types of housing can be affordable to. Then we start talking about specific, a little bit more unique. Are there people that have special needs related to their residency? So that might be seniors. It might be people with developmental disabilities or other disabilities where they either need physical or service accommodation in order to be able to live in their housing. And then you're part of a larger region, so part of the discussion will be around regional collaboration and where your work coordinates with other cities or complements the work or is impacted by what is going on in the region that you are part of. So those are the major theme areas. Now, just a little more context of how we tried to help set up. We gave you a lot of information in your packet. And just to clarify what that material is, that material is the housing needs analysis, and we sent it to you as three different appendices, attachments, because there are really three very different components to it. The first is a story about housing in general and needs for housing, which is the demographic to people, you know, housing is a response to housing needs of households and families and individuals, that what we have found, and one of the reasons that Arch was created is because there's, while we have differences, there's a lot of similarities. So that report was something we wrote for all of the cities simultaneously and looked at what we thought was key information and where there are a lot of similarities, and it sort of highlights that more from a story point of view with some key graphics, and then also highlighted a few areas where certain areas stand out. The second attachment is where we took the same database, but we looked at where Sumamish felt like it was more unique. And so that was something that was done with the eye on Sumamish itself, and it's about a six or seven-page document, again, sort of a story with some key graphics. The third attachment is the raw data in all of its form, where every city's data is presented individually for a wide range of type. Generally, we, when we organize the data, and you'll see in the presentation tonight or the discussion tonight, usually we first talk about the demand for housing that comes from the demographics of your community, of the community. So that can be demographics in terms of types of households, but it also can be sort of income demographics. Then, there's a lot of, then there's data that relates to housing itself. You know, what type of housing do you have? What is the price points of your housing and things along those lines? So quite a bit of data there in that third appendix. Now, this was done several years ago. We've only had a couple weeks since your last meeting. So what we have done is, we then added a fourth attachment where we started to update where we thought some of the data would feel fresher if it were more updated. So when you look at Appendix 3, you will see in the appendix, if there's an updated table, it says that hopefully really clear at the beginning of that table. And then we've tried to order Appendix 4, or the fourth attachment, to be in the right order so that you can relatively easily find the updated data. Now, as somebody commented, the data is not necessarily at this point formatted exactly the same. That's because we had about a week to pull this together. So we have done that. You will also notice there were several new slides, you know, where we said, new data. And there's a couple reasons for that. One is because you are interested in that from your last conversation. We haven't gotten all of that done, but I wanted to refresh your memory, remind you of the topic areas where we are trying to get more refined data already based on your conversation last meeting. So that included information about persons with developmental disabilities, especially by age. So we are reaching out to the school district and to a regional organization on that front. Second, which we have some of the data in here now, is more information about licensed group homes and licensed nursing homes. So we're trying to get a little more detailed information about what is the nature of that housing. We do have some information in the packet, but we're still trying to work on that a little bit more. Another is homelessness in Sumamish and in the region. And there, we have already put a few data points in Appendix 4 based on regional data that's collected through the All Home System. Housing in the pipeline and permits. Doug was focusing on that, so I'm not sure we have that all up to date since he got called out unexpectedly today. So we are, but we are working on that. Then another area, and also looking at population growth and where you are relative to your overall housing target, I think we do have one slide on that. We are trying to pull together information on transit service. That was another area we heard. And then we heard something about cross-sections of rent affordability, and we do have a slide for that one. And then permits by year, and I think that's something we have some information on. So those are the things that you may not see it all perfected yet, but those are things that we did note above and beyond what we have already now that we are working on. So with that background for tonight, there is sort of, while you're seeing this data, what we're hoping, where we're looking for discussion from you is basically, and you can do other areas, but things that come to our mind is first, clarification questions on the data that is available, okay? What Mike is going to do is he's going to, from that big document and based on us thinking and some of your comments, his presentation's going to focus on, you know, not 50 pieces of data, but 20 or less pieces of data. What we think is probably the most salient information to help you in your work on your housing strategy. So we're looking for, for those slides, clarification questions, you know, as we present that, as Mike presents it. A second is, gee, I read through the needs analysis, and why didn't you pick this piece of data to be one of the key pieces of data? And so we wanted to, you know, see if you think that, does the key data really represent the most important stuff? Or is there other stuff that you see in here or that you haven't seen that you think is also important to consider? Because what we're going to try to do is use this material to be one of your sections of your final report of the most salient data. So we're going to do a more condensed version of the housing needs analysis as part of the housing strategy. And then finally, for some of this data, it's like, hey, we like this data, but, you know, could you take it another step further? And I think we talked with you last meeting about that. We don't want to have to do that unless it's really critical data. So again, that's another topic area where, gee, could you do this, like either more geographically orient, you know, specific? Or could you take it, could you say, we want to know how many seniors are low-income? Okay, something like that. And I think we told you before, we want to make sure, before we do tons of those, let's make sure they're the ones that are most salient. So that's the context for tonight. Is there any questions about that or something else that you wanted to put out there before? Turn it over to Mike and have him go through some of the key data that's in your packet, your handout packet. Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name again is Mike Stanger. I'm a planner with Arch. And let's dive into it. So one way we think about working with the data in strategy development is that we're working toward identifying housing gaps, that is, gaps between the needs of the community and what you have in place or where you're heading or things of that nature, both present and future. And we'll talk, in a future meeting, we'll ask you to identify, you know, take what you've learned here and try to put that into meaningful terms for yourselves as to what the gaps are in the community that would set your priorities for this strategy. And as Arthur said, we also organize the data roughly in terms of demand and supply. So I'm going to start with demand and think that's characterized in the theme of people or, as we often look, in terms of households. So one way to characterize demand --
It might be easier to do that.
Sorry. Yeah, well, sorry. So the question of the city's overall growth was brought up previously, and it's certainly pertinent. And so this is meant to show how some history of the city's growth against a couple of your neighbors and where, if you were to follow a straight-line path toward your growth target, what that looks like. The big jump, of course, you see in the recent jump in Sumamish's population has to do with the Klahani annexation. So the growth target is, has been adjusted for that and is right in line with your current population or your current number of households, I should say. So, but basically, what this means is that, for our purposes, is that we're planning for 4,000 new households and what kind of housing would accommodate them.
I have a question. Are these data that's on the screen, are those in our packet?
This slide is new.
It isn't?
It's not in your packet, no. This one is new.
When it is in the packet, would you please tell us where it is in the packet so we can make notes on?
We have footnotes along the way for slides that do relate directly to the packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mark.
I also have a question that I was a little confused by. In Exhibit 4, the first page, it's, I think, the updated data on household types. But anyway, total households lists Sumamish, need my glasses, but it's like 16,000. What is the difference between that, total households versus housing units at 21,000?
The 16,000, housing units and households are generally the same, but the 16,000 doesn't reflect the annexation.
So how updated is this data, then?
Well, 21,310 is the best estimate that we have, and that comes from the State's Office of Financial Management.
No, I mean in Exhibit 4.
That is 2015, so the year before.
15, oh, it was right before.
Right.
Thank you.
And does this, this table reflects the actual GMA requirements? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So will those 4,000 households, will the households across the city be the same as what you have in 2017? This is data showing now in the pie charts how a profile of your households now, and also comparing that to King County. And while a lot of cities across East King County are pretty similar to the profile in the rest of the county, Sumamish is markedly different. As you can see, there's a lot fewer portion living alone, about the same of married with no kids, but a much bigger segment of married with children. However, we, as I said, we found that other cities across East King County are very similar to the county-wide profile. And Sumamish is a young city in more than one sense, and so you might think of King County as kind of your community's destiny in a sense. People age, households change. It won't be exactly like King County, but in some ways, we expect it will become similar over the next 20 years.
We plan to do much better.
Much better? Okay. By the way, one thing I wanted to point out here, too, was that between those living alone, the married with no children, some of the single parents and others, your makeup of one- and two-person households in Sumamish is 40% of all households. of one- and two-person households in Sammamish is 40% of all households. Countywide, that's 65%, so that's another big difference. You have a smaller percentage of small households at this time.
I have a question on that data.
Yes.
So I was trying to understand the household types, and, you know, for Sammamish, I gathered numbers from 2000, 2010, and 2016. So I want to understand how this data relates to the trend that we see. So for example, you know, when you look at living alone, in 2000, it was 9%, 2010, it was 11%, but then 2016, it shows at 9% again. So it's kind of gone down again. And I'm trying to understand, you know, does that data reflect anything, or is that a reflection of the annexation? What is that data trying to tell us?
I, I think a key component of what you said is the annexation. And I think that, and it's also a relatively short period of time, and I think that, you know, like right now, you're starting to see some other types of development. And I, a point I would want to make about this slide, or actually, the previous slide and this slide, is, and you can see that difference, and the story that I typically tell is, I've been tracking this data, looking at this data going back to 1980 or 1970, because I first was here in the early 90s, and I would look back 10 or 20 years. And what was interesting to see is, is that Bellevue, at one point, kind of looked like you today. And 20 years later, it kept getting closer and closer to the countywide averages. Then Redmond was 10 years behind Bellevue, and Woodinville, and you are like 10 or 20 years behind. Now, that doesn't mean you're going to go towards the countywide average, but I think the point that's being made is, is that often, a new community, especially if it grows with a lot of single family, it starts, people who move into new housing are often families with children. That's what happens. My cul-de-sac, I live in a subdivision in Redmond, on the other side of the lake, and our subdivision, we still have some original homeowners there, and it was built in the late 70s. And they said that when it was first built, there were 25 kids living on that street out of eight homes. And there are now under 10. And we have some of the original owners, so that obviously means their grandparents. We have some empty nester. We have a much more, much more diverse group of households because of time and turnover. So that's one factor that can just sort of happen. The other is consideration, is I also think about my hometown. My hometown probably does kind of look like Sammamish, because that's a city that said, when the kids grow up, move, okay? That we really aren't here to, you know, and that's just sort of how that community always has been. That it was there for the schools and that, and when people age, they have a tendency to move on. So part of the discussion we had with the commission with the housing element update is, do you want to sort of allow that maturation to occur in a community that we have seen in others? Is that something you want to accommodate? And I think the commission, at least several years ago, said, yeah, we want to think about that at least, okay? So those are some of the stories behind this data, is you could expect it to sort of go, and we've seen that in other communities, but to what extent do you want to accommodate that kind of diversification that occurs as a community matures to occur?
Isn't it also that, you know, as we develop town center and other places, there will be opportunities for folks, you know, living alone, or, you know, just smaller households, they'll have an opportunity to live in smaller units.
Right.
Whereas they wouldn't choose to live in one of these large, single-family.
Right, so.
And that's a market response to demand.
Right. So the question becomes, do you want, right, the market sort of will help dictate how it will, they'll watch what's going on. And the question is, when you're thinking of your strategies, do you think about what your community could be in 20 years, and do you want to help it? Where do you want to help it be able to go to in the next 10 to 20 years?
Looking at, because of interest in seniors and older households, this shows the segment of the population that has one- or two-person households where one or both, sorry. Yeah, one- or two-person households where at least one person is 62 or over. So relatively small in Sammamish, about half the size in terms of percentage point Before we move on to talking about demand from affordability standpoint, need to lay a little groundwork here in terms of how much people can pay. So that's another aspect of demand. To start with, we think about this in terms of the area-county median income, the area median income, sorry. That, that applies to, King County is currently $96,000 for a family of four. And then we scale that up or down according to the number of people in the family, which we equate, as you can see in the green bar across the top, to the house, the housing size or number of bedrooms. Then we use standard income breaks from that median, so 80% of median down to 50% or 30% of median income, we call that very low income. Then in the body of the table, then we show how much money that threshold is, or that the maximum income level we consider for those different categories. And then taking a 30% of gross income standard for how much people can afford to pay for housing is shown there as the maximum affordable rent. From there, we made some assumptions about interest rate and down payments and homeowner dues and things of that nature, to estimate how much of housing price, sales price that they could afford if they were to buy a home. So before, so this is the basis for some of the analysis that follows, and I want to see if you have any questions about that before I move ahead.
I sure don't. At 80% of the median, you can afford, for a three-bedroom house, $292,000? That's the purchase price?
That's how much somebody make, a family of four with $76,000 income, could afford.
How are all these people buying these $1.3 million houses? How do they do it? Or are they, what are they, what are they doing? Is, are they finagling or something? I don't get it.
Well, people at, making 76 or $77,000 are probably not buying a house that expensive, but they may be buying a house that's $400,000 or $500,000. And we'll show you in a minute what happens.
They're all over the place, and I, it doesn't add up to me, but keep going.
I do think it would be kind of interesting to know, I mean, really, $292,000, I don't know of any, maybe there's a condo someplace for that much, but I, I'm really not sure there's anything in the city in that price range.
Right.
And I'm not an exact number, but it would be interesting to know, even if there is such a thing, what that looks like.
Right. We'll talk about that.
Can we, can we go back one second? Are these the same numbers that GMA uses when they say, you have to have this many units that are affordable for this group of folks? Is that the same?
Well, to be precise, it's, GMA doesn't say that, but the countywide planning policies do.
Okay.
Do use these.
Okay.
Which is kind of part of that whole growth management regime.
Okay.
Right. So we picked these three in particular because they do equate to the policy language in your comp plan, which is based on the countywide planning policies.
Okay. Thank you.
Another part of that countywide planning policies that the city has adopted, and all the cities of King County have done, are committed to addressing the needs of all economic segments of the population. And so we want you to be cognizant of the countywide breakdown of housing needs according to their household income. So that very low-income category that I mentioned before, 12% of the households across the county are, are in that income group, and 12% in the next income group, the low-income category, 16% in the moderate-income category, and 60% is everything above that. So as we go from city to city and doing strategy plans, all, all the cities have included policies to try and address all of those categories, and that's why we do the analysis that we do on affordability. I'll come back to this a little bit later when we look at the actual supply in the community.
Do we have a slide where it shows what Sammamish looks like for those, for the supply? It's in here somewhere?
In the supply, yes. So what we believe is a major influence or factor in creating housing demand in any community is the jobs in that community. And so we do an analysis of what we call a jobs-to-housing ratio, or jobs-housing balance. And the purpose of this is to indicate that what housing supply is like in a community compared to the number of housing units that may be in demand because of the people who work there. There's a natural tendency for people to try to live close to their workplaces. So.
Can I just, I'm sorry. When I just think of Sammamish, most of the people who live in Sammamish don't work in Sammamish, so we travel mostly to Seattle and Bellevue. So our, I, in one way, we're kind of unique in that way. So do we have, how, how does that data then relate to us when we, when we think about housing relating to jobs and location?
So I'm going to let Mike do the next slide, and then I want to come back and address your question, because it affects it a couple of different ways.
Sure. Well, in this slide suggests that there's not a lot of demand at this time from jobs, because there aren't that many jobs. And Sammamish is kind of in a period of its life cycle where people are still commuting out in great numbers. If you want me to, I won't, I won't tell you the math behind this, but unless you want me to come back to it. But as Arthur said, let me move on to the next one. Of the 6,000 or so, 6,300 jobs in Sammamish, this is how the wages are broken down for each job. And it shows, if you group the, the first two columns for Sammamish, it shows that about 60% of the jobs in the community pay less than $50,000 a year. Now, only 18% of those, of all the jobs in the community are filled by Sammamish residents. And do we have the slide with the map in it? So I'll flip ahead real quickly. This is a graphic you may have seen from, last year, from a study that Community Attributes did for economic development purposes, showing that roughly 21,000 workers are commuting out of the city every day, 3,300 are commuting in. They were counting 4,000 jobs. That's a different estimate than, than I have seen. But in any case, the, the point is that it's a small percentage of Sammamish residents who work, who actually stay in the community. So most of your jobs are filled by people who are commuting in to not make a whole lot of money.
So go back to one more slide. So to your question, this is, remember, one of your topic areas is regional context? This is probably an example of where you, as a community, are part of a regional context. And the reason why we've collected the data the way you see it is that looking only at one city, community, could, doesn't really tell you, I think, the full story. When, I remember back when Arch was created, there was a Citizens Task Force, and one of their first conclude, and it was for the city of Bellevue. Kirkland also had a task force at the same time. And one of the things they started to realize, and they said, private sector developers and realtors and community residents, and a whole cross-section of the community, and they said, housing borders, and that graphic you just saw, aren't defined, housing markets aren't defined by city boundaries. They're defined more by a market area. And in fact, it was a conversation in that group that led to why we define Arch as the market area. That area we served was very consciously decided. We didn't just arbitrarily say, what 10 cities do we want to create a partnership around? It was around 10 cities, there are now 14, but there weren't then. What are the 10 cities that we're dealing with, were part of a mark, kind of a market area? And that's what this graphic is trying to show you, is that one city might look great in terms of jobs-housing balance, but if everyone around them isn't, or vice versa, in other words, if you can average yourselves out, that's fine. And some cities might be job-rich, and if the adjacent ones are housing-rich, that could create a balance. And what we're trying to show here, and the one that doesn't show is, this usually has Seattle on it. 1.0 is where you have balance. If you're below 1.0, it means you have more housing available than the demand from your workforce. No attempt to equate affordability, it's just a pure head count kind of thing. If you're above 1.0, it means that your workforce is generating a demand for housing greater than the amount of housing in your community. And we're assuming there's more than one worker per household when we do the math, okay? Just by looking at data that's been out there. So what you see here, and this is only going back to 2014, we do have a much busier slide, if you look in the packet, that shows you going back to like 1980 or 1990. And what you would see if you looked at that graphic is that East King County as a whole used to be well under 1. And so what we've done here is we've done every city, but then the East King County cities is where we've brought all the cities together and see what you look like in total. And so 20, 30 years ago, that number was below 1.0. And about 20 years ago, it got to 1, and then it's been getting higher. Seattle has kind of always looked like what you see East King County. It's always been above 1, which makes sense if you understand planning, central city and stuff. But what's interesting is Seattle's actually been flat the last 20 years, and actually even gone down a little bit, because they've been adding a lot of housing relative to workforce. But the east side has been adding a lot of jobs. And what we're trying to show you in this graphic is that when you look at the different communities like Bellevue and Issaquah, their plan for growth is planning for more employment growth than housing growth. And that was part of a regional process where all, everybody's targets came from. So when you look at East King County as a whole, those three graphic, those three bars, we're at like 1.25 now, our ratio, our growth is expected to be over 1.5. So when you add our growth to our existing, we could expect to even see our overall balance get even a little bit higher, that ratio, over time. So while your numbers are showing flat, around you, there is this pressure from the employment growth of East King County, which affects your mark, your housing market as well. And then the other half of the story is, the other slide is, your workforce as a whole makes the same or less on average than, from a distribution of income than when you look at King County as a whole. You actually have a higher proportion of jobs that are lower-paying. So that creates another conversation, that the jobs you do have, because of this regional pressure, you have expensive housing, but the jobs you have don't offer, they have lower salaries. So that creates a different conversation. So there's several different things, and this has been a core issue, I think, for East King County, and for the county as a whole, but for, and definitely for East King County for the last number of years, so.
Well, if I, quick comment, I appreciate the, looking at what other cities are doing and how we fit into the whole mix, but one thing that these things point out is that these have, these things have a lot of impact on our chosen city character, and this seems to be driving what our character is, instead of us driving what the character is. So I think we want to be mindful of that, I suppose. Moving on? Another way to think about unmet housing needs is in terms of, well, we mentioned the 30% threshold. the 30% threshold for what a household can afford. And somebody asked, what happens when people are paying way more than $292,000 for a house? Well, this is meant to show what happens. When people pay more than 30% of their incomes on housing costs, then that becomes what we call housing cost burden. Or if they're paying more than 50% of their housing cost, we think of that as severely cost burdened. So we've broken this out in a couple of ways, but with particular attention to household incomes across the bottom to show how housing cost burden occurs differently for different income groups. And in the darker part of the bars is for the severely cost burden, and then the lighter gray, is that gray? Purple, is in that 30%, 30% to 50% range. Now, just looking at the left-hand side, where that captures all of your households, that graphic is actually pretty similar to what's happening across King County, income group by income group, and in terms of cost burden. What's interesting is that, looking at the right-hand side, when we just look at the renter household, and by implication, you can imagine what the owner households would look like. The renter households appear to be faring a little bit better, especially in that 50% to 100% of median income. What I mean is that the incidence of cost burden isn't as high, and there's not as much severe cost burden. So the darker bars that you see on the left-hand side, that are smaller on the right-hand side, that's suggesting that there's more, or a higher percentage of homeowners who are cost burdened. So maybe they get into the homes and they think that, well, I can, I'm confident that our household income's going to grow, and we're going to be able to manage that house payment, or whatever. But what we see in other communities is usually the flip side, which is that renters are more often cost burdened than homeowners, and it's more severe toward the lower income side of the graph.
Right. So this is one, also, I think, the way to interpret a little bit the renter is, you see, you know, for the very low income and low income, almost all are cost burdened, or severely cost burdened. And that, especially for severely cost burden, starts to drop at 50 to 80. Now, this is 2015, maybe a little bit older data, and that number can expect to really look different because of how much rents have gone up the last five years. Because rents are usual, you're going to see in a couple minutes, when we go to the housing supply side, rents had been affordable between 50 and 80% of median from the overall market, five, six years ago, but not so much today. So keep in mind, this data is a little bit dated on this particular piece of information. And so why you see that droppage is because average rents are, were affordable between 50 and 80% of median. So if you're in that income level, you have an easier time finding affordable rents back then.
Now, when you're, we had interest in homelessness, and we have a couple different ways, the data on homelessness and the ways of counting it are getting better, and we have access to more data. So we have three things that we're kind of compiling here in one slide. The chart shows data from the county's homelessness information system. That is, people who are trying, are calling 211 or accessing the, what's it called?
Coordinated entry.
Coordinated entry, thank you, system to get services. And we're showing what people reported as being their latest address when they were housed, and counting that per 1,000 residents of the city. And Samamish had 15 total entering the system in 2016. That is, they said that Samamish was their last address. And that works out to the lowest ratio of the cities shown there. But, and about half of those were in families, and half were individuals. That's what we know from the coordinated entry system. Now, from the one-night count, the geographies are bigger, we don't know how many were counted in Samamish, if any. But the last report was from, sorry, that should say 2017, one-night count. Northeast County is the one that they, the area that they include Samamish, and that had 47 people last year. We'll get the new count in May. East County is most of the rest of the east side, the Arch area, and that was 347. And then the third source of data that we watch is for schoolchildren reported to the state through the school districts, who were reported homeless. And showing those for both Lake Washington and Issaquah schools, you could see that those both jumped between 2015 and 2016, the last two years that were reported.
And I think last night, they did the all-home count last night.
Last week.
I think in Samamish, they did it last night, there's some volunteers that had last night counting. It just came up on my Facebook page, that's how I know. They were thanking volunteers for showing up.
Oh, okay, yeah, there was a count done recently, and that could have been last night. And we don't have, we don't have that information.
Yeah, no, I figured you didn't, it's a bit too early for that.
Yeah.
I think this chart is confusing me. Just if you look at, let's take Woodinville, for example. If you have the dark gray, that says it's an individual adult. There's three and a half individual adults per 1,000 residents that are homeless. Then, if you go up in the next gray, which is the family with children under 18, is that 4.7? Or, because the amount is about, equals about 1 in the, in the distance on the bar.
Right.
But when you, is it 4.7 families per 1,000?
No, it's, it's one, I would think of it as one person per 1,000 in, were members of families.
Oh.
I can appreciate your intuition.
January, right, it's the, it's the total, it's broken up, it's not the, it's not that, yeah, they're not in behind each other, like Eric's saying.
So maybe a way...
It's divided up.
That of your total population, about 4.7 per 1,000 have become homeless. And of those, about, just looking at it physically, about three-quarters of them were individuals when they became homeless, and the other quarter were parts of fam, were members of families.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and one thing I might put out there to keep in mind is, a little common sense here, is that people will not necessarily go from really stable housing to homeless. They might transform from, okay, I'm here, and now I go find something a little less expensive, and then that doesn't work, and then they go to something much less expensive, and that doesn't work, and then they become homeless. So one thing that's always a little bit distorted with this data is it's the last place of permanent residence. So you might have had someone here, but you, as you will see, we have very limited rental housing. So they might have gone somewhere else first, from here, and then one or two moves away, then they became homeless. But they might have had residency previously in the city. So that's always a challenge with this particular data. But at least it does get you sense that people are coming from multiple jurisdictions.
And then we also wanted to talk about people with disabilities, and particularly children. We see here that the estimates from the American Community Survey have roughly 2% to 3% of school-age or preschool children have some disability. And we're talking about here cognitive, or vision or hearing impairment, or mobility impairment of some sort. Not much different from the county-wide average for that age group. Also, at the elderly, 75 and over, population very similar to the county-wide estimate. Big difference seems to be in the 65 to 74 age group, for some reason. But as Arthur said, we're going to try and get in touch with people from school districts or other agencies, and see if we can get a better understanding of, you know, what needs are out there. So that kind of covers the demand side from our standpoint, and now we'll...
Let's see if there's any other kind of needs data that they were wondering about.
Sure. So before we look into the housing supply, do you have any questions about what we've talked about so far? Are there any, perhaps, kinds of housing needs that you might be curious about, that you haven't seen, or anything of that nature? So let's go back and think about growth, as we did in the first half. And this is meant to show, this is a little bit earlier snapshot of the community, and so it, it's not taking into account the annexations or any of that. But this was, and this was done before the comp plan update. So I would not put a lot of emphasis on the numbers at this point. What I'd like to draw your attention to is just the general categories and the shapes of the bars, if you will. It's meant to show that of the growth capacity that you have in the community, a little more than half of it is dedicated for single-family housing. The other half is split between mixed-use or just plain multifamily residential housing. Does that make sense?
Where do those numbers come from? Is that just an analysis of zoning and existing versus capacity?
Right, it's analysis of zoning, it's put into a county-wide system of study required by GMA called Buildable Lands Analysis.
Right, so every city does this type of analysis under state law, so it's related to the Growth Management Act. And I think the other point that's sort of being shown here is, it not only shows you what your proportion of growth will be between single-family and other types of housing, but it also shows you, kind of, when you add existing with your projected growth, what those relative, you know, just by the size of them, that ratio. And you would see, in most other communities on the east side, those bars would be more equal in height. Probably most cities have more single-family when you add them two together, but increasingly, we are seeing more and more of the cities where those two ratios, those boxes are, cumulative boxes are getting more equal in height. And that probably shows up in probably your next.
But this is as of 2014, right? Am I reading that right?
But that's accounting for your, when you, but the, the upper box in each of those bars is your projected growth. So that's showing you what your growth could be at in the year 2035?
Projected growth or capacity?
Capacity.
Or capacity, right.
If I can add to that, so the 2014 numbers are actually the most current numbers. King County is gearing up to, and actually, yeah, King County is gearing up to do the Buildable Lands Report analysis again, and the city does provide that analysis and information that their zoning, our permits to the county. And I believe that's 2021 or 2022, when we'll get our growth targets based on our Buildable Lands Report, so.
Right. So you'll be, that exercise will be starting again in a year or two to come up with the next period of time.
Yeah, I guess my question, which maybe is a tangent to this, but if there's 3,706 single-family capacity as of 2014, and we've built 500, and we have another 2,000 under permit, then 3,706 minus 2,500, we've only got whatever, 1,500 left of capacity, in theory.
Right, that, that is the correct kind of math, and that's something that gets refined with the build, when they update the Buildable Lands Report. So further you get from the last report, the more that math is, is it exactly spot-on? Right, so your point's well made.
So the remaining mixed-use cap, is that in here?
That's the 1742.
That's mixed-use, that's not, it's, it's under multifamily. So then where's the remaining multifamily, family cap?
I don't believe you have any, or at least it's very small.
Okay, so we don't, so that doesn't exist.
It's multifamily housing, but it's in mixed-use zoning.
Okay.
Is this, are these numbers common to, you were talking about the city maturation that you've seen in neighboring cities, where, where these two bars are evening out, and this one just seems like we're moving further away from that. And so I'm just wondering, it's just...
That's fair. Compared to other cities, the, the bulk of their growth capacity is in multifamily, and particularly in mixed-use areas.
And, and something to keep in mind, I mean, yeah, your point's there, is if you look at what was in place, 15,000 to 968, keep in mind, you were originally not developing as a city. You were developing as an unincorporated area. And so you had very, very limited multifamily. What the growth capacity shows is you're now at 3,700 to 1,700. So your balance, you know, but you were, you already had a lot of housing built under this sort of old configuration. So you're in a somewhat, you know, unique situation, that you started one way, but now you're a city, and, and now you're starting, you know, with what you have left, what do you do with what you have? And you've, you know, the ratio of your capacity is very different than your ratio of what was in place previously.
Right, and I'm assuming that that, those mature cities, you would probably look at them as being healthy cities or good cities to live in, right? And it's so, assuming that, I think we'd want to just hit the skids on any single-family, and just take all that and put it over on the short block, and get that even, still going to be a long ways away from being even, but at least we have a little closer shot at getting there.
So that's the kind of stuff you'll need to start talking about when you get into strategies, and where the group feels and stuff. This is mostly just trying to get you information, so that you can be informed in those conversations.
Well, but just to be clear, these are the numbers based on the zoning, and unless we're willing to change the comp plan and change the zoning, we're not changing these numbers, right? Of capacity.
That's not the direct...
What actually happens could be different, but capacity-wise?
Right.
The comp plan would have to be changed to change the capacity.
Right, that's right. Correct. But it may influence how you want that 1,700 to look, or, you know, that kind of stuff.
So this kind of reflects the reality of the last 10, 15 years or so, that in terms of the percentage of permits that have gone to multifamily housing. Now, it's not reflecting more recent projects that were permitted in 2016, like SAM and Sky Apartments. And those will show up in future iterations of this. But, and as we said, this represents, for Samamish, this represents more multifamily than you've had in the past.
I have a funny question. I have a funny question. If, if you have R4, which we have a lot of R4, and we have the ability to put in ADUs, is there such a thing as multifamily detached? If the lot is not subdivided?
If you're speaking, are you asking a roundabout question about ADUs?
Yeah. Yes. I'm wondering how you would classify them as multifamily or as single-family?
We don't attempt to do that. You'll see in a slide or two.
Okay. I'll wait.
So another question is, how is the housing industry and the city responding to the household sizes and demands from the household types that we looked at earlier? And an interesting thing that we found, it's a little different in Sammamish than we found in other cities, not quite as pronounced, but still there. What we've done here is kind of stack the household sizes by the number of people against the house sizes by the number of bedrooms, combining the studios and one-bedrooms, as you can see in the note there in the top bar. So generally, what we see is that, as I said at the beginning, 40% of your households are one or two people. Countywide, it's even more, bigger number. It's almost 2/3. And yet, the majority of housing units are three, four bedrooms or more. So it's an interesting skewing, not to suggest there's, not saying there's anything wrong with that, but it suggests that there's demand for housing that has fewer bedrooms. And is the, is the community and the housing market responding to it appropriately or not? It's, that's a, it's a question without an answer at this point.
How do you know that there's demand? I mean, that, these are statistics that doesn't show there's demand.
Well, demand in terms of just the number of households and what their characteristics are.
Right. But if two people want to live in a four-bedroom house, that doesn't, there's no relationship of demand.
What we've heard in a lot of communities, when we've brought this up, is that people would like to have smaller housing and they can't find it.
Right. So great. So to your question, try and tie together this exercise. You may want to ask a question in this community about that. Because what we have heard in other communities is a big issue. Remember my earlier story about my town didn't accommodate seniors? They moved on. We have several of our cities on the east side where the seniors are saying, "I would love to downsize if I could find the right kind of housing for me to downsize too." So you may want to take that data and say, "Let's ask the question in this town to see if that's true or not." Or maybe it is because people, that's not an issue here.
Well, it's probably a blend, because I think we have people like that. And we also have young couples or couples with one, you know, child that buy a large house anticipating to grow into it.
But I'm just trying to use that as an example of how you could use this data. One way to refine getting data is to use our outreach effort to ask some more, help the questions, inform those questions.
Can you explain this table a little bit more? I'm a little bit confused. What is, what are the percentages on the bottom mean?
The percentage, I mean, on the left-hand side, it's the percentages of all your households. Excuse me. And on the right-hand side, it's the percentage of all your housing units. So for instance, 45% of your housing units have four bedrooms.
Oh, I see. Okay. No, I got it. Thank you.
So a question came up about affordability of your housing. In this chart, the brighter colored bar segments are the more expensive ones. These are rents. So you can see how they break out in comparison to Iskua Redmond, the county overall. Generally speaking, rents in Sammamish are more expensive than they are in those other communities. Would you say that's due to the age of the rentals? I mean, the older the rentals get, the rents go down. I mean, are they because they're new, new construction?
As part of it.
And it's probably demand. Demand, people who want to come and live here pushes the rent up too with a lower inventory of probably rental.
This is meant to be an historical look at changes in rents over time. And to show you a particular phenomenon that we've noted, which is that up until five years or so ago, maybe less, that rents historically track income pretty well. And in this area, at least have tracked in between what, sorry, a low-income household could afford and what a moderate-income household could afford. That's between those two plane bars. What we've seen more recently with rent increases overall is that now that's broken through that 80% or moderate-income threshold. And now you have to make roughly median income in order to afford a median, an average-price apartment.
And of course, somewhere in there, we had a recession. You know, between 2008 and 2012, so to speak, we had a recession where, you know, people were getting out of home ownership and into rentership. Our rents were going down at the beginning of the recession, were plummeting at the beginning of the recession because there was such an, you know, excess of inventory.
And that's the dip, and that's the dip you see. But you'll notice that, that's not the first time we've had dips in rents.
Right.
Rents, you will see this kind of pattern historically, because they're much more, in economic terms, liquid. People can move very easily in rental housing, so they will search for cheaper rent. And so when economies get soft, rents get soft. But what is so unique here, and why we pointed out, is even with all that fluctuation, and this only goes back to 2000, I could do this graph back to 1980, and you'd never see the averages go above 80% of median, what could be afforded. Now, there's two contributing factors to it. One is the growth of rents. The other is median incomes have not been changing as rapidly as they used to change. So where median incomes would generally increase close to 3% to 4% a year, in the last 15 years, it's been more like 2% to 3% a year. So there's two contributing factors to the shape of this graph.
To do a similar chart for home sales prices, we don't go back as far in time, but you see a similar effect. Now, the current, or the latest median sales price in Sammamish for condos and single-family detached combined is over $1 million. And a median-income household, that price would, affordable would be 369. We passed that a long time ago. But now even condos in Sammamish are, have risen above that level.
So one question I had about, there were, there were some tables about this as well, but why, why is it median instead of an average? It seems to me like it would be more intuitive if it was an average instead of a median, because we have some very high-priced homes that can skew the median high, I think.
The other way around.
That's why you do the median.
With the median gives you the number where half are below and half are above. The average is going to be influenced more by the extremes.
Okay.
And I'm going to have you keep in mind this graph in the condos versus single-family, because I'm going to, I think we have a slide a little bit further on where I want you to remember the shape of this relative to another issue when we get to that slide about condos versus single-family.
So I mentioned I'd come back to the gold bar showing the countywide need by household income. And here we're comparing that to what's, to the actual affordability of the housing, both in Sammamish and countywide. So there's no community in King County that's doing great according to this standard. Everybody's got work to do in order to improve on this. But, and I don't, I know it's in your packet, I don't remember offhand what the numbers are for the low and very low income. But you can see the deficits between those three lowest categories in Sammamish. And here, we break out the Sammamish and King County bars, just in terms of numbers, by separating the owner-occupied housing from the renter-occupied housing. In either case, the affordability in the lower ranges is, you know, about 1%. And here's your information on accessory dwelling units. So Sammamish is actually doing reasonably well compared to other east-side cities in terms of multi, in terms of permits for ADUs. We're all trying to figure out how we can get communities to catch up with Mercer Island. But this, ADUs is another area where, that's generated a lot of interest in these strategy processes that we've gone through in other communities.
So one comment, or, you know, there's some more data I would like to know about this, because as you know, Sammamish is really sort of a collection of neighborhoods, right? And many of them have their HOAs, and they're very restrictive on their, on how ADUs can be built. So I would like to understand, you know, how is that different? Because I'm looking at here, and Mercer Island has, you know, a higher ratio of ADUs than Sammamish. I mean, I think in the past six years, we've just added seven ADUs, at least, you know, for which have been permitted for. So I think it'll be interesting to understand, you know, how, what's the interplay of annexed communities versus the non-annexed ones and HOAs, and how that influences ADUs.
Well, and another influence on ADUs might, that might be interesting, is, does Mercer Island have, you know, lot size limitation, you know, lot size, minimum lot size requirements, right? Because if smaller the lot, the less likelihood there is for having room to support an ADU on the lot, right?
Vast majority of ADUs are within the main house. They're not built as separate structures, Mercer Island and elsewhere.
How does that work?
Very easily. And we can bring you some pictures if you're curious. But we once hosted a workshop for planners all around the state. And I took, I had, one of our staff went down to the UW Architect Library and went through books of designs from houses from the 50s and 60s, and just made, this is a long time ago, overheads. And we brought in an architect who did ADUs with no prompting. And in each session, we had three sessions during the day, and each session, he was given 10 new overheads. And he had to show where he could put an ADU in that house without expanding it. And he was able to do it nine times out of 10.
That's really interesting.
So daylight basements, just visualize daylight basements, that's, and they're even plumbed perfectly for it. So it's pretty amazing how many homes can accommodate ADUs without significant additions. And given why most ADUs are built, it's to deal with a family situation that, but in Mercer Island, you do start seeing builders are starting to incorporate them into their new home design to sort of be able to accommodate. I had a good friend who completely remodeled the house, and the parent was getting older, so he laid out the house so that he had that little wing or subset of the house that he could use, but he could so easily, if needed, convert it to an ADU, and like, with hardly any cost. So I think there's a variety of reasons, but often they're not done in detached units.
That's actually important, because with our surface water design manual, we don't really allow more impervious surface on our lots.
But that's another good point, though. That's another influence.
So is there a simple criteria that defines an ADU, then?
Yes. An independent living unit. So it has to meet minimum size for occupancy. It has to have cooking facility, and it has to have bathing and sanitation facility. There used to be provisions for fire-coat separation, but now actually the states relax those provisions a little bit to sort of make that a little bit easier. But basically, you need to have the minimum unit dimensions for room for sleeping, and then the kitchen and bath. So they're considered complete units.
No separate entrance, nothing like that?
Yes. And they need to have their own entrance, which can be done a couple different ways. I mean, it does, you could do it through a shared interior. Most cities want it done and have design guidelines on how that second entrance is And then I wanted to go back to the ownership one, because the slide wasn't in there that I, but I'm going to point out Exhibit L2 and L3, and you're, you can write it down if you can't turn to it quickly. And the reason why I wanted to point those out related to ownership housing is, and condominiums, is that what we have seen in the last 20 years is increasingly, in more cities, and your city, it's 100% at this, you know, we only did it through 2011 in this graphic here, that increasingly multifamily housing does not mean rental housing. It used to mean that, but it doesn't now. And somebody was commenting to me earlier about, you know, homes are big now and, and stuff, and gee, there's townhomes that are 1,200 square feet, and, you know, and families are living there. It's like, well, guess what? In the 1950s and early 60s, brand-new single-family homes were under 1,000 square feet, and they were housing three or four children often. So what we have seen happen since I've been working on the east side is that increasingly multifamily ownership housing is becoming the more affordable form of ownership. It might be the entry level or whatever, and it can serve different needs. But that, and that in many cities, we are seeing the proportion of multifamily housing that is owner-occupied, is designed as owner-occupied housing. And so you're 100, you were 100% now with the new development, you'll see some change there. But in cities, if you look at that, you'll see that in cities like Kirkland, 35% of new multifamily housing over that almost 20-year period is ownership housing. And a lot of the permits are for, are multifamily. In other words, multifamily is the highest proportion of permits overall versus single-family in those communities. But they haven't seen a change in the balance of owner versus renter-occupied households. And it's because increasingly rent multifamily is owner-occupied housing.
I think that'll be also another interesting data point to understand more on why, you know, people are going towards multifamily homes. I think we looked at that chart earlier. And, you know, what are the advantages to a city to have that kind of denser or multifamily homes? Because it seems like that's the trend, but what is, what is the advantage?
And that, again, sounds like another question for community outreach. What are the things people would want to see if they wanted attached housing for owner-occupancy? That might be a good question.
So just a couple more, more detailed or closer looks at how, different types of housing supply. And this question came up, I believe, what kinds of housing are provided for various special needs populations. In Sammamish, you have actually 11 adult family homes and one assisted-living facility that's, I think, pretty small by assisted-living standards. It's actually kind of an oversized adult family home, from what I can tell. So if you take that in proportion to the number of older seniors in population, the number of facilities is kind of lower, and number of beds is kind of low relative to other communities on the east side. But that's, you know, another function of the age of the community, I think. And then finally, we... And then, finally, we lay out here the different types of affordable housing units that Arch Cities have helped create. This is showing the, where the units have been located. We could show it in a different way, that actually shows which cities have helped pay for them, in the case of the direct assistance. So, the direct assistance indicates where some kind of funding, or perhaps fee waivers, or impact of some sort, or free land goes into that category. So, those are units that were subsidized in some way. The land use category captures units that were created through some sort of incentive program, like in your town center, the affordable, and there's a combination of mandatory affordable housing and bonus incentive. So, that's where those 75 units come from. In, in the market category, a lot of those are actually either ADUs, or very small, like apartments, like studios, one bedrooms in most cases, or, in some cases, college housing.
And I would, to that one, like when you see some of the cities, like Bellevue and Bothell, sort of have higher numbers in those categories, this is over, over, in about a 20-year period. We do have, this data is broken down by year, and you would see, what you would start to see, is that units created by the market have become less over time. In other words, we survey all new multifamily housing when it's built, to see what price point it's available at. And so, that's how we get the numbers for the market column. So, we found that some jurisdictions are getting more in Bellevue, where most of those 1,200, or they are small units in downtown, actually, and some other places around the community, where they've built very small units. And so, that's kind of, there's a time perspective on that. And then, similarly, if you looked at land use, you would see that those numbers have been increasing over the last 10 years, because we are seeing more cities like yours. You didn't have a program. Now, those whole, all 75 of those units are all from the last five years. And similarly, other cities have adopted provisions like that in the last decade. So, you'd see that number is going up some. The other thing I would point out, the other story here, is that you will notice that for those affordable at low income, it is almost always required some level of direct assistance. That some of those properties might use land use incentives, but they also need direct assistance. So, that's one of the stories here. But, at the same time, we're also trying to point out that through allowing diversification of the market, and allowing the market to have more choices on what they can build, and your land use incentives, and direct assistance, all of those can help in the moderate income range. So, you know, but generally, we have a few exceptions where we can get down to low income with incentives and, or other tools, but generally, it requires direct assistance. So, that's another one of the basic stories, from tracking this information over time.
And this does not include shelters, right? This is strictly housing, not shelters?
Not what?
Not like homeless, you know, shelters for people who are homeless? Like Sophie's Way wouldn't fall under here, correct?
We do include beds, and so, we do have like group homes for development disabled, or a group home for formerly homeless. So, there are homeless units in here. I don't know if there's any shelter units. We will, we think we will, in a couple years, have a couple, some, some of those will be shelter units. But, yeah, most, for the most part, they are, they're essentially all permanent housing, but some of them are group living, in group homes.
And why are some cities listed twice?
Oh, no.
That's called putting together stuff quickly, in one week.
No worries, we can add.
I know, so we have to look at that.
And I just wanted to-
We were so focused on Sammamish-
(laughing) -in a different city.
-that we'll have to double check, we'll have to make sure we update that table.[885.04][885.04](laughing) Because that is, I don't know, I've never seen that before.
75 is, many of that is coming from the town center, correct?
Yes.
That number? Thank you.
I'm trying to think, do ADU show up in that column? I thought ADU showed up in that column.
Market, I think.
We'll double check. They, that, we'll have to figure out where the, this goes back to your ADU question, where they show up. One, we gave you completely separate data for ADUs. And then, the second, ADUs are included in here, under the moderate, but we can't remember which column they're in, land use or market. So, that's what we pulled out, from that bigger, fatter, thicker thing. And we still have a few that we said in the beginning, we're still working on from the last meeting. You've been asking questions as we go, so that's good. Now, now, some of the bigger picture question, and you've even said it'd be nice if this data could be a little more refined, but now, does this, you know, does this seem to give a good general context of data? I mean, there's always, you can use more, but, or is there some, when you look through this, the remainder of it, you went, wait a minute, I, I saw this one, and that seemed really important to me.
The biggest concern I have is that, and I'm not sure that it affects what we decide to do, but the fact that a lot of this data does not include Kohani. I think that that, in many cases, an annexation is not going to influence the overall, but in that particular case, there's a potential, because I think, you know, the housing mix there could influence some of these numbers somewhat. Again, I'm not sure that that will affect our decision-making, but-
It's nice to have, right? It's a big enough-
Yeah, it's, it's a big anomaly in the data.
Right, and, they, for, right, and I'm trying to think, that's 2000, that was January 2016?
2016.
Right. So, we still, in terms of using census data, now, some of the cost data that we have would include Kohani. In other words, because we're getting that from local data. When it's the ACS, which is the new term for census, which is the federal data collection approach, there, they take periods of time, and there's always, it takes them a while to get it out the door. So, the most current we have is data that goes through 2000, up to 2016.
2016.
Oh, so we're starting to get some 2016 data. So, some of these charts-
Five-year periods, and they move one year at a time, so you won't, don't see a lot of change from one to the next.
At some point, they'll, right. So, but that's a good point, whether or not, I'm trying to think if there's some data about Kohani.
Well, I, I'm not as familiar, I hope, or two, you might be, but I believe there's a lot more multifamily there in Kohani than in the general population of the old Sammamish, so-
Correct.
It would influence some of those numbers, potentially.
Right, so that's why I'm saying, I'm trying to think if there's a way, we did this with, Kirkland did a really large annexation.
Right.
And we were able to show that line, because we were able to pull it out. I don't, and I'm trying to think, either from when you did Kohani, there might be some data there, or the way the counties collected some data, we might be able to get some of that.
I don't think it probably affects our decision-making, because we clearly have an imbalance in that direction, and so, it's slightly less of an imbalance by a narrow, small amount, but still, the data we're working with is a little bit old.
Okay.
And I think it'll be just, historically, from your experience, it'll be good to understand, you know, how do these annexations influence the housing strategy? Because Kohani's not the last area, right? We might have a couple other potential annexations that might be brought in, and, you know, Sammamish will grow. And how does that influence, or, and, you know, maybe your example of Kirkland will help, too.
But keeping in mind, Kohani is essentially built out-
Right.
-as a master plan community, so it is kind of what it is.
Yeah, and if I can just add, when we did our economic development data collection last year, as part of the, part of Seattle Grant Project, and I can provide that information, we also had a hard time gathering a lot of data about Kohani, because it was new, and a lot of those numbers hadn't been gathered. So, this is stuff to come, but I just, it was difficult for us at that time, as well.
So, Kohani, Kohani data wouldn't really affect capacity, because, like you said, it's built out, so.
But, again, the single-family versus multifamily, and that data should be, I'm guessing, readily understandable. You know, there might be a couple pieces like that, that sort of help the cumulative picture, but, most annexations are going to be on periphery of a community, so, I mean, that's the more typical situation.
Can you define for me multifamily?
One second, we need to extend the meeting.
Oh.
Sorry. I am moved to extend the meeting to, let's go to 8:45 for now.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to extend the meeting to 8:45. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, we'll extend the meeting to 8:45.
Can you just define multifamily for me, just so that I know, I mean, I, I can visualize it, but I'd just like a, you know, a clarification on what I, what I think I know what multifamily is.
Do you want to?
Well, it, it does have different uses, but generally, it's anything that's attached.
Right, and declared, but it could be, right, so attached, it's physically attached, but it could be rental, it could be ownership, it could be, you could have townhomes where everybody owns their individual piece of land, or it could be a condominium where the group owns the land, but the building, so it's really more of a building form. So, it doesn't necessarily, that's why I was making my comment, that increasingly, multifamily housing is a, is both rental and ownership. Because a lot of people think, I've been doing this long enough, a lot of people go, oh, multifamily, and they think they're saying rental, in their head. And that's the point we're trying to make, it does not mean rental.
Okay.
But depending on-
Can I just ask a quick clarification of that? Just from the data, this is probably relevant, but, there are a bunch of places here, it talks about, I'll just read, it says like 1 detached, 1 to 19 attached, 20 or more. And then, there's this other category called other, including multifamily housing. What, what is that category? What does that mean?
What's the chart number?
This particular one I'm looking at is in Attachment 4, on page 11, it's Exhibit L1. I know it exists elsewhere, too. As I was reading through here, I saw it a couple times.
Generally, that's mobile homes and floating homes.
Got it, thank you. Didn't think of that.
Duplex count is multifamily?
Depends on who you're talking to.
Is it, is it really like, there's a shared wall somewhere in the, in the building, is between two occupants, is that the-
Sometimes they can, they can be considered single-family in some communities, right?
So, that's where you're getting into a fuzzy area, when it's all-
Depends on the context.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have one question. You know, we saw a lot of charts about jobs and employment, and I think, yes, that is one of the reasons why many families live to, choose to live in Sammamish. But I know that when we decided to move to Sammamish, schools were one of the biggest reasons, and I know from friends, that that is a big reason why we move, you know, why people come to Sammamish. Should we be looking at any data related to schools, when we're thinking about the housing strategy?
Potentially, I'm not, I, potentially, I'm not quite sure at this moment, but yes.
There's actually one statistic that stood out with me. It was 26% of the workforce is employed by a school district.
Yes, and, you know, I, I think I'd asked Doug about that, and that, that struck me, too, is that, you know, locally, so we have a lot of local teachers, that's what it seemed like.
Well, it's actually about the quality of our schools, right? And the, and the scores that our, our schools get, you know, on that ranking. And that obviously does play into people's decisions, whether they come to Sammamish, or Redmond, or where they go. And that's probably something that we need to be asking at, at reach.
Well, let me ask this of Arch, with the, when you say 26% of the workforce works for a school district, does that mean it's 20%, 26% of the jobs in Sammamish, right? Not 26% of the population? So, it doesn't necessarily mean that people who live in Sammamish work at the school district, right?
Correct.
So, for me, it meant that we need to potentially provide housing for that large percentage of folks who are working here, but probably don't live here? That's how I was interpreting that statistic.
And that was what that graphic was trying to show you.
That graphic, would that show, kind of take that teacher thing to the next level? You know, firefighters, city staff, I mean, all these kind of things? It'd be nice to kind of know the percentage of those individuals that we're kind of dependent on, to keep the city running, or, or living in the city.
Okay.
Maybe they don't want to live in the city, but if they wanted to.
I think, I mean, yeah. I was just, I was just saying, it'd be interesting to, to maybe pull some information on average income, and then relate that to what our housing prices are, gives you an idea.
I think with the data you've seen tonight, you'll know what that's going to look like.
Yeah.
But, if, we'll talk outside the meeting, staff, about the question you just posed, to see, because we do, we'll pose and see to what extent that can be clear. Because that, while it's 26% for the school districts, and, I don't know what the percentage for cities, that's, we do know where people are living who work here, but we don't know which jobs they have. So, it's a matter of going to those employees, employers, and say, do you, how, to what extent do you know that? And we, and that might be easier not to do, and that we'll check. I know Mercer Island did that analysis, and they were able to do it pretty, that city was able to do it pretty easily.
Do we have a map that shows where people are coming from, who work out of town?
Who work out of town?
Out of town.
Wait a minute.
We do.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm not following-
Who work out of town, the people who commute.
Where they work?
Yeah. Do we have a map that shows where they live in Sammamish?
Oh.
To, who work out of town? That would be one thing I would be interested in, and the other thing is, the map that shows the distance to mass transit, so people can walk to mass transit.
We are, we are working on a transit map? So, we are working on that.
Okay. The other one, I, I just wondered if there are certain neighborhoods that have more people that commute than others? I think there are, and I think you talked about that one.
So, this is one, okay, so this is one I'm going to put to the full commission, because you might remember, last time I talked about a cross tabs thing, or this is maybe a census tract level question? That would be, is, is that from census data? Were they in work?
Yeah.
So, I'm going to put it, because it's extra work, so I'm going to put it to the full commission. What I think we would do, in trying to do that, is we would look at, at, at the census tract level, and see whether or not the data, sometimes they won't give you the data at that refined a level, so that would be the quick, the quickest way to see with data that may already exist, to maybe answer that question. We may find that sometimes what they do is, the census has to be discrete, and so, at some point, they start saying, we won't tell you this answer, because you could correlate it to something more direct. So, like companies, and things like that. So, we'd have to look, but we could do that, but it would be extra work for us to do. If it's, the full group feels that would be helpful, then I think that's how we'd approach it.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking is, like, like Commissioner Baughman said, without changing zone, you know, without changing the comprehensive plan, we're not going to be changing the zoning.
Right.
And so, how will we, why would it matter which certain neighborhoods?
I thought it might influence mass transit.
Yeah.
I also think, and then, this is a speculation, but I would, I think it's pretty common, the newer the neighborhood, the more likely we're going to see people going to a particular, whoever the latest employer is, right? Now, I'm trying to think how that may influence the housing strategy.
That's what I'm thinking.
It may mean that we need to consider things that encourage more diversity of housing in newer neighborhoods, because right now, we're not getting that. I'm not sure, but if it's came back different than that, I'd be very surprised.
And I'm, I'm not sure the data source, well, that would be, I don't even know if we could do that one. That's a cross tabs, that's where you have to actually go to the census and ask, because your neighborhoods, I don't think, are one part of town, or newer neighborhoods in another part of town, are it? So, the census tracts are going to have newer and older neighborhoods, the way your city has grown, I believe, for the most part. So, it would take, but what I am hearing is, you've given some reasons why it might be helpful, so I'm asking the group, we've suggested how we could try to do it, and we're not promising we'll have an answer, but that's what we would try to do.
I thought we saw that information once, and that's why I thought of it.
Did we have it?
That we had it already, or, maybe it was someone from the public's talking about it.
I don't know, have any transportation studies been done for you, that would have gotten into that?
I, I'd have to look into it.
Yeah, we can look into that as well. We can see if there's already been something done.
There might be.
Okay.
Along the same mapping lines, I, I think I mentioned this last time, to me, it's, it's always helpful to see where these things, we have all these facts and figures about percentages of housing, but to me, it would, it would be another layer of, of help to-
But to me, it would be another layer of help to see where it's distributed. And to be able to, it seems like that could be a thing that we could influence our housing strategy, so we can start influencing to try to get a diversity going, or whatever. If we don't know where these things are at, we don't have a lot of opportunity to do that. You know what I mean? Where is the median income housing? Or where is the low income housing? Where is it physically located in the city?
When you say low income, are you referring to that housing which is explicitly affordable?
Not necessarily, but any of those incomes.
A small data set here, we can pretty much tell you.
Right, well, what I'm saying is, so we have these, we have this housing mix, and where's, how's it distributed on the land?
What about just a zoning map?
I was going to say, how different is that from your basic zoning?
Well, but the zoning has to do with density. It doesn't have to do with affordability, right? I mean, R4 doesn't guarantee that it's affordable housing, any affordable housing is going to exist there.
I agree with Eric. I'm always looking for patterns, and open space patterns, or hazardous, vulnerable land patterns, or anything to give us a guide, so that we can make smart decisions. And we never, I feel like I'm in the dark all the time. I just want to see where these things are. More than just a list of numbers, which is going to be very hard to come to something worthwhile. It's going to be a real struggle for me. Whereas if I could see it, I would feel so much better about it.
I think that's the designer in us, right? I mean, that's what it is.
I think sometimes there's, the city might be worried about creating false land values, or creating places where people could try to take advantage of others by putting it on a map. And I'm not, I'm not sure, but I think that we, maybe that is a concern. But I think the trade-off, we get so much out of that map, and we can make such better decisions as a planning commission, if we had more mapping.
So.
Why don't we start with a zoning map, actually?
Right, so we could, okay, so.
Since I have even looked at one, and I know it would be helpful. For example, what is usually the zoning for apartments? Is it greater than R12? I'm not sure. We, I know we have a very limited amount of that in the city, but at least, I mean, that will stick out on the zoning map.
I was going to, so yeah, what can we do to sort of visually? I know, I've talked with Commissioner Brooks, and we've looked a little bit at the historic, the buildings that have been mapped as maybe as historic. So that's, I know, something we've started to look at. You've got the zoning map. And then the other thing I was going to suggest is that we can get you, we've been working on the map that shows you the census tract areas. And so then we can have a conversation about, are there certain pieces of data that, understanding where the geographic areas are, that you'd say, could you take this data and map that for us? So for example, housing cost. Could you do that by these areas? Or the other one you mentioned, the commute thing? So what I almost suggest before, I'd almost say, let's wait till the next meeting and have that map for you, and you can see the data, and we can say, we'll work on the zoning map, and the map showing the areas, and I don't know how far, the historic maps, but why don't we try to bring a couple of those to the next meeting, and then ask the question, given this is, since you'll be able to see the neighborhoods by the census tracts, say, this, let's take these two, three, do that by census tract if you can. And we can map that. Does that? That's what I'm saying. And so I want you to see what the chunks are, that we can use the ACS data potentially for. And I've heard two suggestions, and what we may do before that meeting is look, try to see how hard it is to do that. You know, we'll take the two that were suggested tonight, and see how hard it would be to try to do that at the census tract and map it, so that we can then have a fuller conversation about your patterns comment.
That would be nice, but I have another idea.
Okay.
I've seen a map that shows housing, when housing was built, when houses were built. And I don't know where I saw it. I don't know if it's part of the comp plan. I think it is. And that would be very helpful as part of this, because we could see places that might need revitalization.
Right. And I think you're going to find, I think, right, so this is where we have to, we're going to ask you a hard question. If you could list 20 things, we, do you really need 20 things? We want to challenge you to say, what are the three or four that will be? So first, let us get you the map. Let us do a little research to see how hard it is, you know, we'll look at the age one, too. I think I know what the answer is on the age one's going to be, once you see the map. But let's get the map first. And then we'll say, let's see what we can marry together without it being, let's just make the list really long, just to have a long list. Because that's, I think there's probably other things that would be more helpful. But I think some would, might help you.
Right, I don't like the long list.
Good.
I'll sort of add to it, though. I think it would be really helpful if we could do some work to clarify ADUs throughout this. Because I suspect my senses, we're going to have a discussion about that at some point. And it'd be interesting to know some of the statistics, whether ADUs are included or not, with our, you know, housing targets, how are they included, not included, with those bar graphs with the total number of single family? And, you know, how do ADUs kind of fold into a bunch of this? Is that really a good strategy? Or does it become problematic, or whatever? You know, so understanding how they fit into the statistics would be helpful.
Okay.
I agree with that, because with, you know, the 15,000 or 15,500, 15,500 single-family homes, that kind of looks like one of the biggest opportunities. But I agree, we need to find out, is that really the right way to go? Is there a different way to go?
Right. And our poster child, Mercer Island?
Yeah.
They said, this is our answer.
This is the way to go.
And look at their results. So they were, so whenever they thought about ADUs, they're like, but we want them, we need them. It's the fit for our town. And so they were always very conscious in all their actions, in trying to make it reasonable, instead of, well, we're going to allow it, but we're going to put so many constraints on, it'll be hard to do.
Can we hear sort of a case study on that?
Chair calls, I just need to let you know that it's 8:45.
Yeah, you're right, sorry. I move to extend the meeting to nine.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to extend the meeting to nine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. The meeting's extended to nine. Is there a way to see sort of a case study of Mercer Island?
I'm pretty familiar with it.
Maybe a five-minute, I don't know, whatever you think. But I do think that would be really helpful.
Yes. Okay.
Anything else? And we do need to leave time for our folks to speak.
So it says one thing I just wanted to make clear to myself, is that it sounds like some of these ideas that we're having for the strategy plan, we might be encumbered by exploring some of these things by the higher-level document of the, of the comp plan, might prevent us from doing some of these things. So it'd be interesting to, I think it'd be, we have to keep tabs on that, I guess, right? As we go through.
Yeah, and one way to do that is, as we're going through strategies, just to check in and do a review, and make sure that, that we don't have those conflicts. And if we do, we need to expand on our strategy, on how we deal with that.
I really appreciate the presentation. I think it was really well done and very informative.
Okay. So what we were, some of the components of the next meeting at this point, that we've been talking about, but Doug's not here, so hopefully I get it almost right.
Yep, I can fill in.
Is to, one, do some more work with the data, you know, the thing we just talked about. And this also, now that you've been through this all, you have some time to look at it some more, and see if there's other key observations. But what is often, what we try to have you start talking about, especially, you know, we gave you the housing, we gave you the needs, is a lot of cities will start to come up with a short list of gaps, where they think there are gaps. And the gaps might be defined from a demographic point of view, or they might be defined from a housing point of view, and one might influence the other. And the reason for trying to start thinking about that is because that's going to help influence what strategies might feel most important, because they most help deal with gaps. Plus also, having what you think are gaps are great to test with the community and your outreach. So that's what we, so the data conversation at the next meeting will be about responding to some of this, but also starting to think about the implication of the data, and how you see it come, what are the key, what are the key stories that come out of it? Then depending on how much time that takes, the other thing we want to start, have you start doing, is getting familiar with the strategies. So you've got that matrix. We're not trying to get you to start screening them. We want you to make sure you're understanding them. So to the extent we have time, it's a matter of just going through them, and talking about them, and getting clarifications about what they are, just to get you more up to speed on them. So that's, those are the two, first is, the first part's the most important. Then time permitting, we start the second part.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we better open it up for public comment, unless there's a last burning question from anyone on the commission? Okay. I will open public comment for the agenda item, which is the housing strategy. So who wants to go first?
Good evening, planning commissioners, and welcome to the two new commissioners. My name, Paul Stickney. I'm at 504-228th Ave., Southeast. A couple of things, real good presentation tonight by Arch and staff. Information, updates, and your guys' comments, all good. ADUs, not too common in Sammamish. These are just a couple off-the-top things, you know, before the presentation. They tend to be in homes that are Style 16s that we call in real estate, or 14, which is a rambler with a full basement, or a mid-entry. And Sammamish has some of that style, but not a lot. So you can have an ADU in a rambler, or, you know, two-story home, it's just not as common. Kohani, about 11,000 people, about 3,800 units. About 2,900 of those are single-family homes, and 900 multi-family. In Sammamish, you know, before our annexation, we were about 94% single-family and 6% multifamily. And after Kohani, we were about 90% single-family and 10% multifamily. Okay, on to the presentations. And I'm going to, I'm going to send you a copy of this, because I probably can't get through the whole thing in my time, so I'm going to sort of breeze through, but I will send you a copy of this. And here's a key comment. My, I'm not here tonight to try to get you to lobby the city council to change the comp plan. I'm doing that. I'm presenting information to the city council to suggest that we open up the comp plan on housing policies to plan for three kinds of numbers, not only one. Let's see now, how do I do this thing? Here we go. I see a Sammamish goal is to attain holistic sustainability over time for our entire community, for nature, cars, money, and people. All four segments over time. Our comprehensive plan housing policies, and I don't want to offend anyone, and I'll explain why I say this in some upcoming slides, our housing policies are incomplete and unsustainable, because they only deal with the regional growth target. There are two types of numbers that our, our housing policies do not deal with. And I'll have that coming up. Complete and sustainable housing policies by changing the comp plan would create favorable and temporal, longstanding solutions for our city. What they would do is allow the framework to allow our private-built environment, which includes housing, to be brought into a optimal, I'll spell it out, the B, balance with the natural environment and our public-built environment. So again, I suggest, and this is to the council, not to you, I suggest that the housing strategy plan goes on pause, that changes get made to the comprehensive plan, and then we pick back up the comprehensive plan after those changes are made. What is housing, I'll spell it out, might be, balance? Rather than read it, I'm going to resend this. I gave this a couple of weeks ago at your meeting. But here is a holistic summation that is a, it's 55 words, but it's a real mouthful. I will send you a copy of this. The three types of housing numbers that must be fully planned for to get holistic sustainability within our community is besides our regional target, we need to plan for the absolute single-family zone capacity build-out. I'm going to send information on that. The rest of the presentation here does not deal with the second one. I'm going to send that separately. Economic and demographic gap numbers is what I'm going to talk about here. So a few weeks ago, I gave a presentation about equally important. And it, in essence, asked, based on the single-family homes we have now, or how many we could build, what is the right amount of smaller and different homes in our centers to accommodate the needs and wants of those households over a cycle of life? This isn't about attraction. It's about serving those inside our community over time. The housing analysis that has been done does not identify specific gaps. It has not gotten into supply, demand, and gap for all economic and all demographic groups. Our 2003 comp plan, however, did. For the, for the three, and this is in the handout I gave you, for the three lower categories, we knew precisely how many housing units there were, how many households there were, and what the gap was, which is in the lower corner. We did that for lower categories. We also knew back in 2003 that we had a very vast, high-end demographic and, and groups to study. Interpolating that comes into a recommendation of what gaps and groups we should study from an economic and demographic perspective. I'm going to be updating this into 2017, which is what those two arrows are for. So in closing, I suggest to the council that we pause the strategy plan, conduct a comprehensive needs analysis, which does not mean, and I'm almost done, it does not mean that we have to fill every need. It just means that we know what the needs are. We do surveys to find out what people want, and reassess our housing policies in light of comprehensive needs information and community survey information. I'll be sending more information on these topics.
Thank you for the comment.
Hi, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408-208th Ave., Northeast in Sammamish. That's your zoning.
That's your zoning map. It's from the council office, it's always there, they have the street map, too. There's only a few places that are R12, if you wanna peek at it before you go out. Also, David Hoffman from the Master Builders Association used to frequent, haven't seen him in a while here, but he said, "Mary, there's ADUs, which are additional dwelling units, and then, or, and then there's DDU's, which are detached additional dwelling units." So, maybe that term will help you guys figure out ADUs versus DDU's, because maybe you don't have space for that. So, I started looking at the housing strategy when we were doing the roundtable on growth that was presented by the Honorable Jeff Thomas and Company in September of 2016. At that time, I did read the entire Buildable Lands report, and it occurred to me that the reason that we need town center is, we can't do single-family houses and reach our jobs. In order to meet the jobs number, you gotta do town center. And the Buildable Lands report, which has a blue vacant lands map, the 2013 data and 2014 report, it actually says we can do about 5,100 homes, where we've only been assigned, or, excuse me, 50, we can increase by 5,100, whatever they are, and we only, our growth target externally has been given to us about 4,600, it's actually 4,640. So, right now, without rezoning, you have enough land to just let single-family houses build. And my concern with that is, since you've got the moratorium on town center where the building should be, putting the smaller units, everybody's building a McMansion on the R1s, because that's what the market's demanding right now, or they're going in the environmentally critical areas, because if you have an existing lot, you don't need a subdivision or short plot to do that, so you're actually throwing development into those areas. And if those areas are building, they're eating up some of your growth target, but we've already got a situation, we have way too many big houses, and we don't have enough small houses. So, when I originally read the things, they had some numbers, they said, well, from Paul Stickney, you've heard there's three centers, there's Sammamish Highlands, there's QFC, and then there's the Kohani area, and when Kohani annexed, it had about 1,000 multi-family units. We only had about 1,000 multi-family units in all of Sammamish, and you can see where those are, it's not a huge number. So, Kohani actually doubled that amount. And then, if you look in the report, it actually says how Redmond, how Izziquah is, and how Mercer Island is. So, I wanna think about what your perception of Sammamish is versus Mercer Island, and how many multi-family units percentage-wise do you think are in Mercer Island? And their number's 25%. And in Izziquah and Redmond, because they've been growing, it's at 50%. Sammamish is at 6%. And with Kohani's addition, when we annexed, we moved up to 10%. So, just because we were unincorporated King County and we grew, we had too many big houses, too few little houses, and nothing else. We're still growing that way, and unless you do something with land use and putting moratoriums or changing them, we're gonna keep growing that way, we're gonna keep having too many of these. So, that's a really big concern to me, and I did this presentation when we were trying to get the economic needs analysis funded, because you have to speak for budgeting, so it was like the end of last year, so I did it in front of city council, and this is my memory from it today. But it's super essential, we have a town center, it's gonna grow, it's like a fruit basket, what are you gonna put in it? Because if you don't put enough smaller units in it, where are you gonna build a second town center? So, you need to really think about what goes in there, and while you're thinking about it, don't be throwing all the development in at the R1 and the small, little existing lots, because that's not helping us either, and it's not helping stormwater, and it's not helping people in safety, so it really does need to get looked at. So, in support of Paul Stickney, the growth target that we've been given, that's 4,640, that's just the external growth target. He wants the survey or the needs analysis done to figure out, what do people really need and want, because that number's much higher than the growth target, and the way you get that is putting a lot more little units somewhere in the city, and town center is the best place for those. So, I think that's really important to understand, and the first time I met Paul, I kinda didn't know who he was, and in real turn, we got to know, he goes to more meetings than I do for a longer time. He, I said, "Oh, you're for affordable housing." He said, "No, affordable housing is one segment of the population that needs federal subsidy." He said, "I'm for housing affordability," and we need that for everybody, we need it for me, my kids are going to college now, I'll be an empty nester, we need it for new families, we need it for firefighters, teachers have to marry somebody from Microsoft, because on their teaching salary, they can't afford to live here, or they move out. Also, the dip in the slide where the rents went down, Lake Washington School District was actually declining at that time, because we had problems with programs they were offering that we couldn't continue to offer them, because people were moving, and they were moving to Fall City and other places, because our prices were too high then. So, that's one of the dips in the slide. So, there's a lot of things that link together, but your land use, what you do, how many small units you put, and where you put them, is absolutely essential for the health of our community, and if we do it better or right with some of the things Paul and Dick are suggesting, I really think it will be a better community with more diversity, transit will work. You won't get as many single units. And I like the idea of using ADUs, like Art said they're doing in Mercer Island, but I will tell you, you've got parking problems doing that, because when multiple people, when you're gonna be putting four cars at a house, people don't have four-car garages, and in areas like where I live, on little streets, there isn't any on-street parking that's safe, so please think about those things. I think you guys had great presentations, very fine information given, you guys discussed it really well. I just wanted to throw in that, that's my view of where the growth is, and the last thing I'll tell you, Mark Cross told me this, he goes, "Mary, you can research as much as you want." He goes, "Growth follows sewers." So, get to know the utility maps, I have those, too. If you don't have sewers, it's gonna be hard to redevelop that area, people aren't gonna be able to do anything with their home, or add a basement, you can't even refinish the inside. You need to know where the sewer lines are, the water lines are, and to do support in those areas, you probably need some stormlines, and that gives rise to, why don't we do some retrofit fits a few places? Because it really is a public benefit for everybody, it helps the community, and it helps the city, so I had to finish with stormwater.
Thank you for the comment. All right, if there is no further business this evening, any further business, then we are adjourned, and it looks like 9:04.